What they said to me is as long as I continue to be a team player, they know I'm on the right team. I'm doing the right thing. I'm protecting who I need to protect. You know I'll continue to stay in good graces in Trump world. And they have reminded me a couple of times that Trump does read transcripts. And just keep that in mind as I proceed through my interviews with the committee. Here's another sample in a different context. This is a call received by one of our witnesses. Quote, "A person let me know you have your deposition tomorrow. He wants me to let you know he's thinking about you. He knows you're loyal and you're going to do the right thing when you go in for your deposition." I think most Americans know that attempting to influence witnesses to testify untruthfully presents very serious concerns. We will be discussing these issues as a committee, carefully considering our next steps. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I yield back.
General woman yields back. Ms. Hutchinson, thank you. Thank you for doing your patriotic duty and helping the American people get a complete understanding of January 6th and its causes. Thank you for your courage in testifying here today. You have the gratitude of this committee and your country. I know it wasn't easy to sit here today and answer these questions. But after hearing your testimony and all its candor and detail, I want to speak directly to the handful of witnesses who have been outliers in our investigation, the small number who have defied us outright, those whose memories have failed them again and again on the most important details, and to those who fear Donald Trump and his enablers because of this courageous woman and others like her, your attempt to hide the truth from the American people will fail. And to that group of witnesses, if you've heard this testimony today and suddenly you remember things you couldn't previously recall, or there are some details you'd like to clarify, or you discovered some courage you had hidden away somewhere, our doors remain open. The Select Committee will reconvene in the weeks ahead as we continue to lay out our findings to the American people. The Chair requests those in the hearing room to remain seated until the Capitol Police have escorted the witness and members from the room. Without objection, the committee stands adjourned.
The January 6th House Select Committee has finished for the day. They heard from surprise witness Cassidy Hutchinson, who was in the White House the day of the attack on the Capitol. Hutchinson was a close senior aide to the White House Chief of Staff Mark Meadows. And among many other things, she testified that former President Trump knew the protesters were armed when the president called on them to march to the Capitol. She said that Trump was so insistent on going to the Capitol himself on January 6th that he grabbed the wheel of the presidential limousine and a Secret Service agent told him to let go and that they were taking him back to the White House. She also said that Chief of Staff Mark Meadows said a few days before January 6th that it could get, quote, "real bad," that he repeatedly had no reaction at all as it became clear that the crowd was armed, that it was storming and breaching the Capitol itself. Hutchinson also said that Trump was resistant to all calls for him to urge the rioters to leave the Capitol, and that Meadows said that Trump at one point during the day expressed support for the chance in the Capitol of hang Mike Pence, and that after January 6th, Mark Meadows, the Chief of Staff, sought a presidential pardon. I'm Scott Detrow. This is live special coverage from NPR News. There is a lot to get into, and we will start with Claudia Grisales, who is our congressional correspondent, who has been covering this committee all along. Claudia, so much vivid detail. What are the most important things we learned to fill in the timeline of what happened on the 6th and what Trump was doing on the 6th?
Well, we learned that the White House was in extreme turmoil over the efforts by then-President Trump and his closest allies to overturn the 2020 election results. And as we heard from this witness today, Cassidy Hutchinson, who was an aide to the then-Chief of Staff Mark Meadows, there were three camps. There were one...
I would invite everyone who so desires to stand for a moment of silence or personal prayer. And if so, please remain standing so that we can do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for June 28th, 2022. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. Our meetings are broadcast live on RV TV, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Friday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Rona County's website at www.ronacountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisor meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. And please turn off all your cell phones or put them on silent. Opening ceremonies is roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters.
Here.
Mrs. Hooker.
Here.
Mr. Noworth.
Here.
Mr. Bradford.
Here.
Mr. Mahoney.
Here.
Item B, request to postpone or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests from any board members to change the order of agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I would ask Mr. K. Wood to provide a briefing to us about school resource officers. And if there are no objections, I would like to add this to item D1 on our agenda. Mr. Lubek, do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir, I do. I would propose to add a second closed session as item O2. Specifically, I propose that the board go into closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2 hyphen 3711A7 to consult with legal counsel regarding probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. I do have reasonable basis to believe that litigation may be commenced against the county by a known party.
So, folks, let's add that to item, closed session items. We have one already. This would be item O2. Item C is our Proclamations, Resolutions, Recognitions, and Awards. A resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors, Rona County, to Wendy Schultz, Tourism Event Coordinator, upon her retirement after more than 20 years of service for Rona County. Mr. Blunt, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Today is a very, very bittersweet day for me. I have had the privilege and honor to be able to work side by side with Wendy for a little over 10 years. She has been, I guess, we've been partners in crime together for handling Rona County special events for my time. Prior to becoming Assistant County Administrator, I was, had the honor of being Director of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism, and was responsible for many of the major special events that Rona County offered. And one of the things that I learned very early in my career was I needed to get out of Wendy's way and just let her plan and implement special events. And Wendy is one of the most creative people I've ever been able to be around. And I think that showed in the variety of events that we've had over my time, but over her 20-plus years here, and the professionalism, as well as when you look at the number of volunteers that she was able to recruit and keep over the years. She brought some very, very special people into all of our lives to be able to offer all of these wonderful events. I think for me, what was really the pinnacle of her career was the development of Illuminights. And I told this story when we had Wendy's retirement going-away party. When we met with different jurisdictions across the Southeast that offered a Christmas light display, whether it was driving or a walking type of event, we were told we needed to bring in a Christmas light consultant to help us with putting together the shows. And I had never heard of a Christmas light consultant. I didn't even know that that was a business. But there are, and there are some that are very well-known across the country. And one of the things that I figured out very early on is we didn't need a consultant to tell us how to put up Christmas lights. We had Wendy. And, you know, Wendy put very much of her heart and soul into the development of Illuminights, and I think that has shown with the creativity and the changing of the event each year. And quite honestly, has been, you know, has been really a true, not just for Explorer Park, but for Rona County, the signature event that we put on as an organization. And it's something that I know Wendy is very proud of and that I share the same sentiment of being very proud of being able to host up to 60,000 people a year for, to be able to celebrate Christmas and the holidays with Rona County. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you if we would like to read the resolution to be able to...
Madam Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution expressing the appreciation of the Board of Supervisors of Rona County to Wendy Schultz, Tourism Event Coordinator, upon her retirement after more than 20 years of service. Whereas Wendy Schultz was employed by Rona County on September 4, 2001, and whereas Ms. Schultz retired on June 1, 2022, after 20 years and nine months of devoted, faithful, and expert service to Rona County. And whereas Mrs. Schultz, through her employment with Rona County, has been instrumental in improving the quality of life and providing services to the citizens of Rona County. And whereas throughout Ms. Schultz's tenure with Rona County, she was instrumental in establishing the Tourism Division of the Parks and Recreation Department. Her partnerships and connections throughout the Rona Valley contributed to the development and coordination of over 29 special events for Rona County Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. During her career, the most notable were Enchanted Eve, Pike Festival, Tons of Fun, Touch a Truck, Green Hill Highland Games, Rona County's annual Christmas tree lighting, Artisan Saturday, and Illuminights at Explorer Park. Mrs. Schultz's efforts were responsible for creating countless memories made for families and individuals in our region. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Rona County expresses its deepest appreciation and the appreciation of the citizens of Rona County to Wendy Schultz for more than 20 years of capable, loyal, and dedicated service to Rona County. And further, the Board of Supervisors does express its best wishes for a happy and productive retirement.
I would ask... I'd ask for a motion on the resolution.
Chairman, I make a motion on the item, recognizing Wendy Schultz, C1.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker.
Yes.
Mr. Noworth.
Yes.
Mr. Bradford.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Well, I can remember when Pete Haslip kidnapped you from one of our, from one of our competitors. And we were very happy. So I want to apologize that I was unable to attend your retirement party. I had a brief illness that I've recovered from. But we have a gift, I believe, for you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you. As Doug mentioned, it's very bittersweet for me. I can honestly and from my heart say that I have loved every moment of everything that I have done, and I have met some of the most wonderful people. And I know those connections will continue, and that's what makes me happy. And thank you for the recognition today. You have no idea how much I appreciate that.
Comment, board members?
I would just say thank you for the professionalism. You're always there with a smile on your face. And when I was the chairman, prodding me around, telling me how to be here and be there. Kept me in line, and I really appreciated that. But as Doug said, you don't get in their way. So, but thank you for everything. I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add, Wendy, you have done so much good for Rona County, and we are so indebted to your creativity, your time, your effort, your love for what you're doing. And you can just really bless us by being here. So best wishes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Many have come and many have gone, but there certainly is going to be a challenge to fill the talent that you brought to Rona County. It's going to take a while, but I'm sure you've imparted much of your wisdom to those that worked around you in the Parks and Rec. And so for that, we thank you and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Wendy, we are really going to miss you, your creativity and your artistic gift. And when I first came on the board, I went out to Illuminights. And when Doug told me that you did it and not a lighting expert, I was absolutely amazed walking through it. And it was, I have never forgotten you and your name from that moment. We have a lot of employees, and so I concur with my other board members. We are going to miss you. But best of wishes in the future, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I think Amy wants to take a picture.
Yep.
Item D1, briefings. Mr. K. Wood.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, our nation was shocked and deeply saddened by the senseless murder of 19 students and two teachers, as well as the wounding of 17 others at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas on May 24th. In the aftermath of this tragedy, school systems, law enforcement agencies, and local governments across the country are examining their school security protocols with a particular focus on their elementary schools. Fortunately, Rona County Schools, Rona County, our police departments, Sheriff Department, and our fire and rescue department have worked closely for many years to provide a safe environment throughout our public school system. Our school system has implemented a wide range of physical security, physical school security measures primarily focused on limiting school building and classroom access to only authorized individuals, as well as working closely with our law enforcement and EMS agencies to provide robust prevention and incident protocols. In addition to these measures, our police department currently has 10 positions allocated to serve as school resource officers primarily in our high schools and middle schools. Also, our county sheriff's department currently provides two resource officers to provide some SRO presence within our elementary schools. The sheriff's office also provides one additional SRO to provide additional security presence during school construction projects. It should be noted that staffing constraints within our police department have limited our ability to dedicate 10 officers to SRO duty. However, due to the board's commitment to public safety through providing additional funding for public safety salaries, our police staffing levels are improving, and we are making progress in being able to restore our full complement of school SROs. On June 20th, I received a request from the Superintendent of Rona County Public Schools asking that we fully restore staffing to our existing SRO program and also provide additional staffing for the elementary schools. The superintendent also indicated that the Rona County Sheriff Department had proposed to county schools that it could provide an additional four SROs for the elementary schools, and that subject to school board approval, the schools would fund salaries related to these positions. At this meeting on June 23rd, the county school board discussed this issue and decided to work with the county sheriff's department to increase to six the number of additional part-time SROs in elementary schools. This would yield a total of eight SROs across our 16 elementary schools. While the school board allocated funding for the estimated $180,000 in personnel costs for this proposal, their resolution requests that Rona County cover these costs as a public safety need. In discussion with both county schools and the county sheriff, in addition to the funding required for these salaries, there are also additional needs for equipment, especially additional vehicles, required to field six additional SROs for our elementary school. The sheriff has indicated that if Rona County were able to provide the needed vehicles, they would be able to address most, if not all, of the outfit costs required. Our staff have worked diligently to identify six appropriate vehicles, and we will be working cooperatively with the sheriff's department to ensure that they are appropriately outfitted for the intended use. All the vehicles are former police patrol cars, and they should be ideal for this purpose. On June 22nd, the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services issued a supplemental grant application availability for school resource officers consistent with the recently approved Commonwealth budget, which provided substantial additional funding, state funding for SROs. Applications for these additional funds are due back on July 15th. It is staff's recommendation to the board that we continue to work cooperatively with Rona County Public Schools and the Rona County Sheriff Department to fully explore this recently announced grant opportunity before making any additional funding decisions. At this point, we believe that all the other non-personnel costs can be provided for through existing appropriations between the county, the sheriff, and the county schools. The grant application is July 15th. Given the size of this request and the potential long-term commitments involved, our county policies would suggest formal presentation to the Board of Supervisors. I would propose that we set aside time at our July 12th Board of Supervisors meeting for board consideration of the grant application after hearing from staff and the research that we've done with the schools, the police department, and sheriff department, so you all can consider these questions before we have to make that submittal on July 15th. I do appreciate this opportunity to brief you on this important issue. I do want to stress that while there's a lot of questions to look through and answer when we consider these issues, that we do have a wonderful working relationship with our county schools, which I think greatly increases safety. And we've, of course, worked well for years with both the county police and sheriff's office to provide SRS. With that, I would welcome the opportunity to take any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. K. Wood?
Mr. K. Wood, is that deadline of July 15th attainable?
I believe it will be. I think we're at some advantage because we already have established programs. And I do think, from everything that I understand with the money the Commonwealth has allocated, that it's very important to try to get an application in to meet this initial deadline because there's additional funding in both years of the biennium. And I believe the normal SRO grant program has a March application date. So my assumption is you're going to have this window of time, then you would have to wait until March. That's what we know at this time.
And that amount of money is about $45 million, I would say.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. K. Wood. I think this is, this is an important step for us. You know, we've heard from Chief Hall and Sheriff Orange at our last meeting about the existing steps that we take to protect our children and our schools. And I think we are doing a very good job with that, and I applaud everyone in this process to try to add additional school resource officers. We have some hoops we have to jump through, and staff is going to help us with that. We know we need to take a formal vote on a grant application, and we can do that on July 12th. And I guess I'd just like to send the message to our citizens that we're doing everything we can to protect our children. And I think it's a good, positive step. And I just hope that we have success at the end of the process. If there are no, any further comments?
Couldn't say better.
Next item on our agenda, item E, new business. Item E1, a resolution governing the release of documents by the Rona County Internal Auditor. And we have Mr. Lubek and Ms. Cool.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Under the Freedom of Information Act, the general rule is that government records must be open to the public and disclosed upon request. However, the act does set forth certain exceptions to this general rule. Some are mandatory and some are discretionary. Section 2.2 hyphen 3705.3 of the act sets forth several of these exceptions, including exclusions that apply to records created and maintained by internal auditors that are appointed by local governing bodies. And section 2.2 3705.37 concludes by stating that local governing bodies shall adopt guidelines to govern the disclosure of records created or maintained by their appointed internal auditors. This board has not yet adopted such guidelines, and today we have some guidelines for your review and consideration. Ms. Cool, the county's internal auditor, and I have together reviewed the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, as well as the practices and processes of the internal auditor, and have developed these guidelines for your consideration, which would guide the release of records created or maintained by Ms. Cool. These draft guidelines were shared with the county's audit committee on May 24th of 2022, and the audit committee informally approved the guidelines. of 2022, and the audit committee informally approved the guidelines and recommended that we present them to you for your approval. And it is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Cool, who's with us here today. I know that some, but not all of you, have had the pleasure of meeting her. She has quickly become an asset to Roanoke County, and she will briefly share a summary of the guidelines that are proposed for your adoption. Ms. Cool.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I wanted to provide a bit of clarity on what this resolution specifically means for the county's audit records. My office primarily performs three types of engagements, of which would result in the issuance of a final report, primarily performance audits. These are the focus of my office and generally concentrate on effectiveness, efficiency, compliance, and internal control of the program under audit. Investigations are also performed. These stem from complaints received from our anonymous fraud, waste, and abuse hotline alleging any kind of misconduct within the county. And then follow-up engagements. These occur on management action plans that result from either performance audits or investigations. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, performance audit work papers and final reports are subject to public access through FOIA request. This resolution protects our investigation work papers from public requests through this discretionary exemption as Peter described. Completed investigation reports, which FOIA requires disclose specific information, are subject to public access through a FOIA request. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the resolution.
Any questions of Ms. Cool or Ms. Lubek? Any comments from the audit committee? With that, I would ask for a motion to adopt the resolution and to approve these guidelines.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you.
Item E two is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the Professional Engineering Services for Plantation Road Improvements Agreement with Whitman, Requart, and Associates, LLP, for Phase Two of this project, Holland's Magisterial District. Ms. Cronis.
There we go. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Wanted to go through a brief presentation with you on the Plantation Road Project. We have spent a lot of time on this project over the years, but we are requesting today authorization to amend the Professional Engineering Services for the Plantation Road Improvement Agreement with Whitman, Requart, and Associates, LLP, WRA, for additional construction administration services for the Plantation Road Bicycle Pedestrian and Streetscape Improvement Project, Phase Two. The image you see at the right is the completed project from Hampton Inn to Walron Drive. A brief overview. We started in 2008, when the Board of Supervisors adopted the Holland's Area Plan as part of the Comprehensive Plan. In 2009, ITT, which is now Elbit Siphons of America, astronaut county about installing crosswalks across Plantation Road to facilitate safe pedestrian crossing for employees as they own property on both sides of the road. From 2009 through 2016, staff submitted several applications for grant funding to implement the Holland's Area Plan with bicycle pedestrian and streetscape improvements, with many successful applications. In 2013, Roanoke County entered into a contract with WRA to provide engineering, design, and outreach for the Plantation Road Project with the option to add construction administration services. In 2015, preliminary engineering ended, and the right-of-way phase began. In January of 2016 is when the First Amendment was approved, which was the Board of Supervisors approving an amendment to the contract to coordinate utility relocations and to provide construction administration services. You can see the images at the right are two different public engagement meetings we had in 2014 with the community. In June and October of 2016, we advertised the project for construction with a base bid for Phase One and a bid added the option for Phase Two due to financial constraints. In March of 2017 through October of 2018, SC Rossi constructed Phase One, which included the show-use path with curb gutter, street trees, and a community identification sign along the west side of Plantation Road from Williamson Road to Walron Drive. You can see the groundbreaking and the ribbon cutting. Picture's at the right. So as a reminder, Phase One is Williamson Road to Walron Drive, there in the green, and Phase Two is Walron Drive to Ganderway and Friendship Lane in the yellow. We originally envisioned this as part of a much larger project, but had to phase, and that's why this gets a little more complicated. So starting with the Phase Two timeline, in June of 2017, smart-scale funding was awarded for Phase Two. In May of 2019, you approved our Second Amendment to the contract to provide design and construction phase services for Phase Two. Because WRA had already worked on Phase One and had designed Phase Two, they just picked up where they left off to finish those plans so we could have moved to construction. In January of 2021, the project was advertised for construction, and then we came to you in May of 2021 because we were awarded additional smart-scale funding, and we needed to accept and appropriate that funding. June of 2021 to today, Allegheny Construction is completing Phase Two, which includes sidewalk with curb and gutter along the west side of Plantation Road between Walron Drive and Ganderway. Intersection improvements at Walron Drive and the installation of pedestrian crosswalks at Ganderway and Friendship Lane. This June, WRA requested a supplement for additional construction administration services for both administration and inspections until project closeout. The project was anticipated to end last December and may now extend until July, so approval of this supplement requires a third contract amendment. So in summary, in 2023, we had the original contract awarded for design services with an option for construction administration services. In 2016, we added the construction administration services through the First Amendment. In 2019, the board amended the contract again, so WRA could pick back up with Phase Two for construction administration services and design for Phase Two. In 2022, we have the supplement request of $10,480 to extend construction administration services until the project closeout, which requires that third contract amendment. Again, we anticipate the project concluding in July. And for funding, there is available funding within the project budget, so we do not need any additional county funds at this time. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Cronis? Mr. Radford?
So I read through the whole thing, and my answer, my question was answered at the very last line, the funding's available.
The funding is available.
So does that mean we're going to have funding left over, and we'll roll it into something else? Is that?
Ideally, yes.
Okay.
But because this is smart-scale funding, there are rules with every funding source in terms of what you can do with any surplus. Because there's very little county money on this project, probably not. I think it goes back to the smart-scale pot and then can be reallocated to projects in the future, which is actually, you know, part of what we were able to obtain when we had a difference last May between the bid and our estimate. We were able to get additional smart-scale funding through that kind of surplus money to be able to award the project.
Okay.
Sir?
Fourteen years, three supervisors in that time, and we're coming to the end. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve item two to complete this project.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. And I would like to echo Mr. North's comments. This has been a very long process, and I want to give a lot of thanks to Ms. Cronis. She has been working on this, it seems, forever. Golly gee whiz, I worked on this thing at the beginning, too.
Three of us were planning commissioners when it started.
And since the approval of the original Holland's plan, we've amended that and adopted another Holland's plan, so I hope things go a little quicker in the future.
No, it was very successful. It takes a lot of work to secure the grants and the smart-scale process, and I give a lot of credit to the two gentlemen to my left, who've worked a lot with TPO and smart-scale, and it's been very successful for us. Thank you. Item F, first reading of ordinances. F one, ordinance authorizing acquisition of an easement across property owned by Technology DR one LLC, and I'm not going to read the tax map number, for purposes of ingress and egress to an adjacent parcel owned by Roanoke County Board of Supervisors. Ms. Lowery.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The board owns a landlocked parcel in Valley Tech Park, which is used for stormwater management purposes. Access to the county's parcel is over an adjacent parcel currently owned by Technology Drive One LLC. They have requested, and I'm here to share with you today, their request for an amendment to a previous access easement granted to the Board of Supervisors to establish a specific location of an easement in order to facilitate their development plans of the property. A map showing the location of both parcels is in your board packet, as well as a plat showing the location of the proposed easement change. Technology Drive owns a northern parcel containing eight acres located in Valley Tech Park and wishes to build a distribution facility on that eight-acre parcel and has received approval by the Department of Development Services for their site development plans. The board owns the parcel immediately south to their parcel, which is landlocked. The county's parcel is five acres in size and houses a stormwater management facility. Again, it's landlocked, and access is only through Technology Drive One LLC's parcel. By D, dated January 21, 2000, the prior owner of the parcel owned now by Technology Drive, which was the Roanoke County Economic Development Authority, sold that property and reserved for itself and the board a perpetual general easement across the parcel. Twenty years later, by an instrument dated October 26, 2020, the subsequent owner of the parcel, now owned by Technology Drive, requested an amendment to that easement to establish a specific location. However, the board was not a party to that easement. So now that they've requested to vacate the board's general easement and establish a specific location, I've met with the Department of Development Services, and they agree with the proposed change to the easement location. There's no fiscal impact associated with this, and staff recommends approval of the ordinance and scheduling of the second reading. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions? Looking at the plat, will the county have to construct some kind of roadway or access to the stormwater pond, or will Technology DR one, as part of its development, construct that and will be able to use it also for our purposes to access the stormwater facility?
Yes, sir. I've reviewed the site development plans, and it included asphalt leading directly across the easement almost to the Roanoke County parcel. And we requested from Technology DR one LLC, and they agreed to extend it all the way to the county's parcel, so it will be paved.
No, we want Technology DR one to be successful, just don't want to have a conflict with them.
That's right.
Because we have an obligation to maintain the stormwater facility and access it and clean it out and maintain its functionality. Any other questions? If not, I would welcome a motion to approve ordinance F one.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve F one.
Do we have a second? Second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item G, second reading of ordinances. Item G one, an ordinance accepting and appropriating $200,000 from the Virginia Tourism Corporation for the purpose of tourism marketing through Visit Virginia Blue Ridge. Mr. Blunt.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The American Rescue Plan Act Tourism Recovery Program was established by the Virginia General Assembly to provide recovery funds to the Virginia Tourism Corporation and ultimately allocate those funds to the destination marketing organizations across the Commonwealth of Virginia. Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge is the official destination marketing organization for this region, including counties of Roanoke, Bartlett, Franklin, as well as the cities of Roanoke and Salem. The ARPA Tourism Recovery Program will provide recovery funds to all 133 Virginia counties and independent cities. Roanoke County's portion of the VTC funds is $200,000. Upon approval of the marketing plan by VTC, Roanoke County will be sent $100,000 upfront, and then, once that money has been spent, Roanoke County will seek reimbursement for VTC for the next $100,000 in VBR expenditures. These funds can only be used for tourism marketing and development, including media buys, advertising, public relations, sales, and product development. Funds may not be used for any expenses that are not related to tourism marketing and development. Roanoke County must commit to spending all of these funds and submit the appropriate reporting requirements by December 31, 2023. There have been no changes since first reading, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Blunt? If not, I would welcome a motion to approve ordinance at second reading under H, under G one.
Motion to approve.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item H one, public hearing and second reading of ordinances. Item H one is an ordinance increasing the salaries of members of Board of Supervisors Roanoke County pursuant to section 3.07 of the county charter and section 15.2, 14.14.3 of the Code of Virginia. Mr. Lubek.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Section 15.2, 14.14.3 of the Code of Virginia and section 3.07 of the Roanoke County Charter set forth the authority by which the salaries of the members of the Board of Supervisors may be increased. And these authorities require that any increase in the supervisor's salaries be accomplished by ordinance after a public hearing between May 1st and June 30th of any year. Any increase is limited to an annual 5% inflation factor. The board recently approved the adoption of a budget, which grants a 5% salary increase to non-public safety employees. And in the past, the board has historically increased its salary by the same percentage awarded to other county employees. This ordinance would increase the board member salaries by the 5% inflation factor. There have been no changes since the first reading, and if there are no questions by the board, I would invite you to hold a public hearing on this matter at this time.
Any questions? If not, I would open the public hearing on item H one. I have no speakers listed for item H one. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. With respect to item H one, I would move the approval of that ordinance. Do we have a second? Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
No.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Item I, appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not otherwise been provided for the clerk? Hearing none. Code item J, consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, I would welcome a motion to approve the resolution for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you.
Item K, citizens' comments and communications. And I have six citizens who would like to speak under this item. The first citizen I have is Holly Delaney. Please come up. Please give your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak, and we have a little light system on the podium, kind of tells you when you can start and go, and then it gives you a warning when you've got a minute left, and then you get cut off. Ms. Delaney, please.
I'm Holly Delaney, 2702 White Pelican Lane. I'm calling about the planned men's recovery, drug recovery, also known as a sober home that's going to be open on my street at 2714. They plan on moving men in beginning of July. I know you've been working on investigating, and Rebecca James over at the planning has spoken to corporate at Pinnacle, and they, that's who is listing this as a sober home. And under my understanding, I don't believe we are zoned for a sober home, and just, I really don't want this opened on my street. It could come with a lot of negative things, and I don't think it's appropriate for, and as we discussed before, it's not appropriate for this neighborhood. And that's basically all I wanted to say, and there is some other fellow neighbors here voicing their concerns about this. the same issue. Thank you.
The second person I have who would like to speak is Pat Richards. Do I have that correctly? Pat Richards?
I don't know the protocol, Board of Supervisors, Chairman, all you guys. I'm commenting about the same issue, the twenty seven fourteen White Pelican Lane. I had not heard the term sober home until this nice lady mentioned it. I live, I'm sorry, I live at twenty seven ten Tanglewood Drive, so the back of my house is aiming that way. There's a huge need for this kind of stuff in the United States. I remember I heard one time if cancer has not touched your family, that you're extremely lucky and you're in the very slim minority. I mean, I mean, it's everywhere. Drug abuse is getting in the same spot. I mean, it could be, uh, it could be any, anybody's relative, you know? It could be a nephew, an in-law, a cousin. It touches everything. So there is a huge need for this stuff and I think it, there's a need in a whole lot of different places, not just in one place where nobody wants to go. But there are some problems with what I understand here. First of all, it's for men only. I mean, isn't this a little on the sexist side, you know? I mean, there's, you know, what, women have these issues too, right? And also the number of people in it. I, I pulled up the GIS. It's very similar to the square footage and floor plan of my house, just within a couple hundred feet. It's got five bedrooms and where do they put them? You know, three full baths? I couldn't do that in my house and to house eight people in there? I mean, I wouldn't invite eight of my closest friends to be in my house more than a couple hours, you know? And they're going to put eight people in here, you know? It's just, you know, I, I think how the, because I, and I didn't hear about the proposal. I didn't get a notice, you know, I thought like if you rezone something, you, you know, people get notices. I don't remember getting one. I'm, I'd like to learn some more about it. So anyway, I, although there is a big need, um, there's some real problems with this in my humble opinion and thank you for hearing me out. Thank you for letting me opine.
Thank you, sir. The, the next citizen I have listed is Lisa Ames.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hamas. I live at thirty six oh eight Verona Trail. I'm here to address the board concerning placing a drug recovery center in our neighborhood. I, along with my neighbors in the year twenty twenty, was forced to endure living next door to a drug house at thirty seven fourteen Verona and they're recovering addicts. Our personal experience with this is what brings me here today. We are again, in fear of being terrorized by these people. We watched as our neighbor and his renters would get clean only to relapse again and the relapse happened more often than recovery. Relapse for them meant no sleep, no peace, and a constant state of anxiety for the neighbors. We never knew when the next fight, the next theft, the next trespass, the next steal, or the next overdose would happen. We watched as the recovering addicts would OD in the front yard and be given Narcan in plain view of every citizen there. We all asked the same question, how do you explain this to your children? Why do you explain to them, you know, how, why they cannot play in their yard? Why is there an ambulance at the house again? Why are the police there again? Why are there people sleeping in the yard, AKA they're passed out? We grew tired of wondering if they were dead or passed out and I'm sure that those that proposed the center stated that there are rules and guidelines that have to be followed. Again, I can speak from experience, they don't care about rules, they do not care about guidelines. They trespass, they steal, vandalize property, they do not care about any of that. Two AM parties, when you have working class citizens that have to get up the next morning, it's very disruptive. They do not care that they leave used needles at our children's bus stops and where they play. We saw it, we lived it. Once they have relapsed, they only care about their next hop. They, I've heard the chairman speak about protecting our children. I'm asking that you deny the proposal. The proposed drug facility is within two hundred and seventy-three yards of Cave Spring High School. It is within three hundred and seventy-two yards to Penn Forest Elementary and within one mile of Cave Spring Middle and Cave Spring Elementary. Four schools within one mile of this proposed center. It is not a matter of when the relapse will happen, it's a matter of when. It's too close for our children. We are asking that you protect our children. We wish the best of luck to everyone that is recovering, but we don't want it this close to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. The next. The next citizen I have to speak is Jonathan Conti.
Hello, board. Hello, everyone here. My name is Jonathan Conti. I live at twenty seven twenty White Pelican. I am directly next door to said facility that we will be speaking of here today. To me, this is not a residence, this is a facility. It's a treatment facility and I think this company, Pinnacle, has gone through this before with Roanoke City and they seem to have gone through the same process. The board, zoning commission have heard the same arguments, all of these emotionally fueled arguments, which of course, it's part of it. The, the laws, regulations, the ordinances represent the people. Government is representing the people and what people want and, and we have these facilities and I work in healthcare. I understand there's needs for these things. But there are rules, there are regulations and I, I feel that this is a business that's trying to take advantage of a residential community and, and just go ahead and do this. They, they haven't notified me. They haven't notified any of my neighbors or anybody of this and they plan on going ahead with this anyways, before they've applied for any licenses, before they've applied for anything, to my knowledge, they're just going ahead and doing this. I know, I, I know the county attorney and everybody, we've all been in contact with them, they've been discussing these issues, but like everyone said, I have two kids at home. I was just looking at videos with my son last night and a sleigh riding in the backyard and how I'm going to have to explain to him, those eight men sitting back there on that back porch watching a sleigh ride. Well, what do I, what do I say? I say, oh, don't worry about them. They'll be gone in about a month, you'll get eight more guys coming in. And so I'm going to have to talk with them about that. I know my neighbors at the cul-de-sac, we've had kids learning how to ride their bikes there. I expect to teach my daughter how to ride my bike, ride her bike there. It's just not the right area, those areas exist. The zoning administrators, your powers and duties, I have a minute left, I don't have to read all of them, y'all know your job. I get it. But a change in the use of this occupancy is not allowed until a certificate of zoning compliance has been issued by the county. Like I said, you guys know that. But it's also, the district is intended to provide the highest degree of protection from potentially incompatible uses and residential development of a significantly different density, size, or scale in order to maintain the health, safety, appearance, and overall quality of life of the existing and future neighbors. I bought into this residence expecting to know my neighbors, to know the safety of where my children are going to be, to know that we can ride our bikes, we can walk to the library from there. I'm not going to have that anymore. My quality of life is going to go down. I'm already looking at installing security cameras for all the problems that we've already talked about. It's just, it's not right. I really suggest everybody look deeply into this, look at the prior cases set out with Roanoke City. They're attempting to utilize threats with the American Disabilities Act, but I don't think that's this issue here. Our issue is with the company that's coming in, not the residences. I wish them the best of luck in everything, but thank you for your time. I'm over.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Next speaker is John Bingham.
Thank you, Chairman and Board of Supervisors. I appreciate your time here for the public hearing today. You've already heard from a few of my neighbors and I'm, I'm not going to get on the personal level so much, but I'm going to start, stick to the level in which I think the neighborhood was designed for. I think our whole neighborhood in Penn Forest was designed primarily for families and residences. And there's two properties on our street. They've mentioned the one twenty seven fourteen, but the one immediately across the street from my house is now an Airbnb style business as well and that's out of the zoning as well, I believe, for the intentions of the neighborhood. And so I'm looking for support in how do we keep businesses that are in a, out of our neighborhood that are a hundred percent there just to profit from owning the property? That's a much different scenario than my neighbor that just talked about raising his children or my raising my children there. And so my desire is to keep the street in that same kind of cultural environment. And by the way, we've had a very diverse group of people on our street, from Indian backgrounds, my neighbor's Mongolian, I've had a Palestinian neighbor, we've had Christian, Hindu, and Palestinians. So I, the street has been diverse and I've welcomed that. I've been there since nineteen ninety-three, so I've seen a lot of different people living there and I want to keep that there. So I see this as a zoning issue where someone's coming in, acquiring a property and they're just defining the use of the property without going through a due process. And that's what I'm asking you guys to help us with, is that there's a due process to this where there is input from the neighbors so that we can address the issues in the open, so there's not a lot of whispering behind each other's back. One of the problems that I have with the Airbnb across the street is I can't even get ahold of the owner. So if I have a problem with them leaving their trash can out last Thursday when they cleaned the house and it was still there this morning when I left the house, after it was picked up last night, I don't really feel like I need to call the county code enforcement person to, to come over and tell them to put their trash can up. So it's those very simple things. If, if someone's living there or is, is taking responsibility for things and things are going well, that's, that's one thing, but that's just not happening. And I think in here in the case with the home with Pinnacle, it seems like there's a skirting of the rules about what the zoning was and what it was intended for and putting this home to a different use and that, that I think is wrong. And I think if I can gain your support in that way to help us fix that, I would really appreciate that. So thank you for your time this, this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. The, the final speaker I have is James E. Stokes III.
Morning, gentlemen and ladies.
Good afternoon.
Oh, that's what it is, isn't it? Okay. I have a couple of questions. Now, the only person that I can address them to is Mr. Mahoney since you represent me. Are you aware of the house on White Pelican and what its use is going to be? That's my first question.
Go ahead.
Second question. If you're aware, when were you aware? The third question. Sir? Is this the same thing that the citizens, is this something that the citizens of the area of this location should be made aware of? And if so, when? To mention something that you said earlier, it's about the children, protecting the children in schools. And you made this comment about, and the public should know. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let me say a couple of things first and then I would ask our county attorney, Mr. Lubek, to bring us up to date as to where we are with this process. I think the, the first communication I had was maybe about two weeks ago, I believe it was Mr., Mr. Mitchell had called me and raised some of these issues and so I related it, those issues to the zoning administrator. Zoning administrator has sent Mr. Richardson out and he's done what Mr. Richardson do. Mr. Richardson's our enforcement, our zoning enforcement personnel. I've been talking to our zoning administrator and our county attorney, trying to gather some facts, get a better understanding of what is happening and what is the process. At this point, at this point in time, I'm not aware of a process by which the board would have a formal vote on this use. We're still trying to gather the facts and get information and find out what's happening. And I understand there are two different issues. I think the more serious issue for many of the citizens is the, what many of the citizens view as a halfway house or a sober house. A second issue is whether or not there is a bed and breakfast or VRBO facility also on that street. For some of you, our, where I lived was up on Skylark, about two blocks away from you. My wife and I have recently moved seven tenths of a mile down, down to Merriman. We're getting too old, so we, we got a patio home, but I, I still live in the neighborhood. I know some of the people who live on White Pelican. My wife and I have, we investigated last night and then again this morning to check out the, the properties. Friend of mine lives down at the end of the street, across from the proposed site. Some of you may, may remember Terry Cochran, she and her husband lived down there. So with all of that as background, I would ask Mr. Lubek to, to kind of give the board some information as to where we are in this investigatory process. And I would also hope that Mr. Lubek might be able to answer some of the questions. We don't have final answers to all the questions. We're working on it. Give us some time and, and we'll see where we are as we get to the end. So, Mr. Lubek, please.
Thank you, sir. And for the other members of the board, I did have the pleasure and opportunity of sitting down with Mr. Mahoney earlier today to review the matter and I had also had the opportunity to speak with some of our citizens by phone this past week and it was certainly a pleasure to speak with them. I would like to congratulate them for emails that they have sent, calls that they have made, and also for coming here today. Clearly, this is an important issue to, to our citizens. I know it's an important issue to the board and it's something that we certainly want to investigate thoroughly and arrive at the proper conclusion. We have confirmed that the property at two seven one four White Pelican Lane is Zoned R one. It is owned by Cioto Properties SP Sixteen LLC and it is, our understanding it, that the intent of the owner is for Pinnacle Treatment Services of Roanoke to operate what is called a sober house at this location. And that at this location, they will provide housing and supervision to individuals that are recovering from substance abuse disorders, but they assert that they will not be providing treatment to such individuals at this location. They claim that they will be providing treatment to the individuals at another facility. I understand that this facility, excuse me, is located on Peters Creek Road. And certainly there have been many concerns expressed by email, by phone, and also in person here today about some of the effects on the neighborhood that might flow from this home being used as a sober home. I would like to review several principles of federal law, state law, and local law, which I believe will inform the decision that we eventually will, will make with regards to, to what to do about the situation. I'll start with federal law. So there are two, two acts that come into play. The first is the Fair Housing Act. The second is the Americans with Disabilities Act. And both of these consider persons who are recovering from substance abuse disorders to be disabled and they provide protection for such people from housing discrimination. The United States Congress in the Americans with Disabilities Act explicitly stated in the act that one goal of the act is to assure individuals with disabilities, quote, equality of opportunity, full participation in society, independent living, and economic self-sufficiency, end of quote. And there are many case opinions from federal courts that have interpreted these provisions and attempts by local governments to regulate and apply these principles. Federal courts have opined that the provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act should be construed broadly to ef- be construed broadly to effectuate its purposes. And these federal laws provide protection to both individuals that are disabled, as well as to organizations that are providing both housing and treatment to these individuals, that both categories, the individuals and the entities presumably have standing to challenge any unreasonable actions that are taken by governments to, that might be discriminatory against these individuals. The Americans with Disabilities Act also does apply to local zoning decisions and prohibits local governments from enforcing its zoning regulations in a manner that effectively precludes such treatment facilities from operating in the locality, or that otherwise impose unreasonable burdens on such programs. Now, I'll review just a few principles of state law pursuant to the Code of Virginia and the Administrative Code of Virginia. The Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services, which is referred to somewhat conveniently as VDBHDS, that VDBHDS is charged with the authority and responsibility of licensing facilities that provide substance abuse treatment services. We have spoken, Ms., Ms. James, our zoning administrator, has spoken with officials at VDBHDS who are charged with responsibility of issuing licenses, and they have advised our, our zoning administrator that they are very familiar with Pinnacle's operations insofar as they currently operate in other locations in Virginia, including, as has been shared today, the city of Roanoke, and that it is VDBHDS's conclusion that no treatment will be provided at the White Pelican Home, and that the home accordingly does not need a state-issued license to operate at this location. Now, I'll review just a couple of principles of local law. The county does have limited authority to regulate the location of substance abuse treatment facilities under its zoning ordinance. The county zoning ordinance does not regulate the location of what are called sober houses. That is an undefined term. We do not have that definition in our zoning ordinance. Our zoning ordinance does regulate the location of halfway houses and does not allow halfway houses to operate in residentially zoned areas. It only allows them to operate in certain commercial or agriculturally zoned areas. The county zoning, zoning ordinance defines a halfway house as an establishment providing accommodations, rehabilitation, counseling, and supervision to persons suffering from alcohol or drug addiction, to persons re-entering society after being released from a correctional facility or other institution, or to other persons suffering from similar disorders. And accordingly, because Pinnacle asserts that it will not provide rehabilitation, treatment, or counseling at the White Pelican Home, the facility may not meet the county's definition of a halfway house. And if that is the case, then we would not be able to prohibit its operation at that site. Again, as I mentioned a moment ago, the classification of a sober house is not a use defined or regulated by the zoning ordinance, but it would clearly be unlawful for the county to categorically prohibit such use from operating in the county. It must be allowed to happen somewhere. At this time, as Mr. Mahoney shared, is our intent to continue to investigate the matter further, but we do expect to share conclusions and recommendations in the near future. And as Mr. Mahoney did share, he did, that he does not see a pathway by which the board would have a formal vote as to whether to allow this matter or this use to be, to occur at the White Pelican Home. I agree preliminarily with that, that this board would not have a role in approving. There is not a formal method or process by which Pinnacle would need to bring this matter before the board to seek such an approval, to seek a change in zoning or classification, or to obtain a permit from the county to operate. But again, those are our recommendation, are our findings at this point in time, and we do expect to conclude and make other recommendations in the near future. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. This is, no, thank you. Any board member comments or questions? Mr. Radford?
Yeah. So being in the real estate field, I'm very familiar with the two federal laws. We have to study those and be up to date with them for every, every two-year cycle for our continuing education, and we're really, we really get it drilled into, to us about the ADA disabilities and discrimination based on your, your health. So I just, I didn't realize that Peter, you know, read your commentary and everything, but...
Thank you. Well, let's continue to study the process. Let's let our county attorney continue to, to research what our options and alternatives and possibilities are for the purpose of the citizens. We're, we're still working on it. I'm sorry, we don't have an immediate answer today or this afternoon, but we, we're trying to get on top of it, and we're trying to get more information to try to figure out what our next step is. With that, we have several other items on our agenda. You're more than happy to sit here and listen, but if you wanna leave, you can do so. It's your choice. Next item on our agenda is reports. I would ask if there's a motion to receive and file the reports.
Motion.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Yes. Item M, Reports and Inquiries. Board members, Mr. North is first up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Chairman of the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission, that body passed a resolution of support for the General Assembly House Bill 105. That bill, sponsored by Delegate Sam Rasul and carrying significant bipartisan support from our area legislators, supported the renovation and expansion of Catawba Hospital into a state center for recovery care in addition to its existing core mental health services. The House bill was ultimately not passed by the Virginia General Assembly, but $750,000 was set aside in the negotiated budget to complete a study on what renovations and expansion could look like. On Wednesday, June 15th, Delegate Rasul called together and a formal stakeholder group for an initial meeting on what this study could look like. Roanoke County Board of Supervisors, Catawba District Member Martha Hooker and I were in attendance, as well as Rose Regional Commission's collective response staff, and a number of other healthcare and recovery practitioners. The discussion was wide-ranging, review of the great need for recovery and mental health services facing the region. Delegate Rasul emphasized this was only the beginning of discussions, both about Catawba Hospital specifically, and also building a recovery ecosystem's congenital. The study should be completed before the next session of the General Assembly in January of '23, most likely in November or early December. I want to thank Delegate Rasul's leadership and the leadership of our entire Roanoke Valley Legislative Group, including co-sponsor Delegate Joe McNamara in tackling this issue. In other news, for all rail fans and passengers alike, Amtrak's second reasonable passenger train begins service July 16th. The second train will arrive from Marchington on July 16th at 1:30 and return at 4:30 PM. Thirdly, in economic news around the Highlands District, the Lewis Gale ER will be targeting its grand opening off of 460 in the Bon Sac area on July 16th, and ribbon cutting will take place on July 15th. Also, Vistaire Eye Center facility is under construction off Airport Road in the Highlands District. Lastly, on the subject of school safety, I came from an industry for 39 years, and so did my family, that believed in safety as job number one. Nothing else ever mattered. The addition of school safety officers is no exception, and I fully support these additions and considerations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Radford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna recognize that our next meeting, July 14th, we will be meeting with the school board, and we'll be meeting with the CTE, 10-person citizen committee. Looking forward to their findings. We've got a little bit of information from them, but looking forward to hear what they've come up with in, in our next step, as we continue to look at improving, updating the Burton Technology School. Thank you.
Mr. Peters?
Thank you. A couple of things. I know that earlier today we passed in our consent agenda, an appointment to the Water Authority. Reason, I did not object to that. I made it clear to the board, because the person that we selected, I have the utmost respect for. But I, I did wanna share my concerns publicly. You know, as we set up our boards, whether it's Economic Development, or the Water Authority, or Broadband Authority, and all these authorities we have, I think that we have to be conscious of the fact of who we're putting on there as far as who they represent. And I think that my concern with, with the Water Authority is that we now have two, I would consider senior or executive-level management that are with a certain company, which will now represent 25% of that voting block for that particular, for that particular company. That's a bit of a concern of mine, but again, I didn't have any objection to the person because again, I know him well, I have the utmost respect for him, but I do think that that's something as a board and as administration that we need to be conscious of in the, in the, in the future. Speaking of the Water Authority, it is a good time in Roanoke County, or at least East Roanoke County in Town of Benton. They will be coming over to the Water Authority July 1st. As I just got a picture from my Lindenwood Neighborhood Group, Town of Benton's ever replacing a water line right now that has busted, so I guess Town of Benton will probably glad to get, move that responsibility over someone as well. But it's been an ongoing issue. I've made the comment when we were before Town Council, Mr. Mahoney was, was there with me. You know, my last couple of campaigns, that was probably the number one concern I, I heard from the citizens was water issues and so on and so forth. So I am, I'm truly excited to, this, for this to take place, because I know that it will be a, a great improvement. Not that the town did anything wrong, but when you have, I think someone at the meeting said it the best, that's what they do. The Water Authority does water. You know, town's trying to do all these other things, so they can specialize in that one area, but I think it'll be good for, not only the town, East Roanoke County, but for the prospect of future development, not only in the Benton area, but I believe maybe even going into that part of Bedford County. This Thursday, yeah, June 30th, from 5:00 to 7:00, we will also be having a open house for the East River Greenway. This will be taking place at the Explore Park Visitor Center. So all that are interested in that, I welcome you to be there. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Ms. Hooker?
Just one item. Two Saturdays ago, I had a very enjoyable evening with the Mesa's Cove Civic League, and really enjoyed visiting with those citizens. A special thank you goes out to Steve Bandi, who's been serving as president for that group, and, and we welcome Todd Simmons as he comes on as the, as the new president. It's a great group, pleasure to meet with. Thank you, Mr. North, for your update on the Catawba Hospital. It's timely, and I appreciate you following that so closely. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peters wants to jump back in.
I did forget one thing. I would like to talk about the Water Authority again. No, so we have a representative who has been on the Water Authority for a very long time. It's Don Davis. He was the prior mayor of Benton, Town Councilman. I would like for us to recognize him at one of our future meetings. Don has been a great asset to the, the Water Authority. I think he serves close to 20 years.
I believe he was there from the formation, is my understanding.
Yeah. And so I think, I think he's one of the longest-serving ones that, that has been on that, that board, and he, he said he was gonna stay on till Benton moved over to the Water Authority, and he, as soon as it was announced, he told me, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be reappointed. So, there you go. So if we can just do that, I would love to have a resolution for Don at one of our future, future meetings. If we can fit in between the Catawba Sport, I mean, the Glenver Sports, that'd be great.
As long as we don't have any big words.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Peters interrupted you.
No, I was kidding. Thank you.
I have no additional comments. I just wanna thank the board for their concern and their interest, listening to the citizens on White Pelican. I know this was not part of our planned agenda, but it is an issue that clearly has a lot of concern and fear and interest. So I, I thank the board for your, your patience and your consideration. With that, item N is a work session, a work session to review with the board, a multi-year budget for Roanoke County. Ms. Gerhart and Mr. Elliott are gonna do that, and we're gonna do that up on the third floor. Next item after that is O, closed meeting. We have two closed meetings. The first one is, I would ask for a motion, well, I'll make the motion, to go into closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.23711A3 of the Code, to discuss or consider the disposition of publicly-held real property that is presently used for park purposes, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And the second closed session would be, we go into closed session 2.23711A7, to consult with legal counsel regarding probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. Legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe that litigation may be commenced against the county by a known party. I would move those two items. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes. Now, let's head up to the third floor and start a work session.